Call this meeting to order. Can I get an approval of the agenda, 1A?
With amended.
Oh, amended agenda, pardon me, with the revision to item 8D. And we also have to pull 2B. So can I get a motion to approve the revised agenda?
I move that we approve the revised agenda.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Two, item two convened to close session. A conference with labor negotiator Myra Perez and John Bartolomé. Organization RIPSEIA. And 2B has been pulled. Close session. For A, oath of office administered to student board members Caitlin Antonetti and Madely. Is it Denise?
Yes.
Okay. Hello. Can you please stand, raise your right hand? I'm going to take this off for a second because I can't do this, so sorry. It's too hot. Please repeat after me. I Caitlin Antonetti and Madely Denise do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States Sorry, I lost my place. And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Great. Thank you and welcome.
Congratulations.
Item five, presentations. What did I miss? 5A, school highlights, university elementary project-based learning.
Can they have Principal Lundie come to the stage? We're so excited. We are beginning to do some school showcases. We're going to be doing this at every one of our meetings. I want to start with UELF.
I can't hear you.
Okay. She's going to be talking, speaking about project-based learning. And give us some background information on some of the work that's happening at UELF. But this is part of a school showcase that will be occurring regularly at our board meetings.
Hi. All right, let me get ourselves situated here. Okay. Well, hello. My name is Christina Lundie and I'm so fortunate I get to be the principal for University Elementary School La Fiesta. Can I take this off since I'm fogging up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Kind of like when we had our interviewees and they needed to breathe. Thank you. So I'm so fortunate I get, this is my second year that I'm getting to start here in Cattay River Park, Unified School District. And I'm thrilled. I love it. And I feel so lucky that I found the school that I think was in my head before I ever got here. So I'm very excited to get to share with you, one, what our focus is for project-based learning, to help you understand what it is, but also to highlight how we did this during a year of distance learning and how we're looking forward to make, take advantage of doing this with students in person, which today we had an amazing first day of school. And it was officially my first day being a principal, having my whole community at my in front of me. So I started with already having seven kiddos visit my office. And they put my prize box to work and they put my book box to work and they put my, I need to color because I, you know, we lost a grandparent in a couple of days and we lost a dog, all those different reasons. So welcome to the world of school. And it was wonderful. I loved every minute of it. So what is PBL? I want you just to take a moment. There's an interactive bit.ly, but our Wi-Fi is not working today. So you can use good old fashioned paper and pencil that you have in front of you. And I just want you to write in your mind, what comes to mind when you think of project-based learning? What do you think it looks like? What do you think it sounds like? And what do you think it feels like when you're doing it? So this is just a way to jog your mind. And I do this with you today because my parents are so lucky. They get to do this in every parent workshop and meeting that I do with them. They get to make a note-taking page. They get to be paused and metacognitive about what they're doing with their children. I see nodding over there. And they get to think about how they build the habits of mind of the students that they live with at home. So this was one of the jam boards that we did with parents and also with families that you have in front of you. When they were asked to think about what does project-based learning look like? What does it sound like when you walk into an environment where it's happening? And what does it feel like? What do these students tell you when they go home? What's the conversation they have at the kitchen table? So we begin every workshop, every meeting, every family night, every time I work with the kids in an assembly with a driving question. And so the one that I'm sharing with you is one that started our school year, this year, with my staff. And it is, how does UELF use project-based learning to build on student assets and strengths to develop the maker mindset and make content accessible? That question is loaded with what our district L cap goals are. Through this driving question, I'm able to drive the work that I do with the staff on behalf of students through the lens of what we're all working towards here in our district. But what's so powerful about doing it through this question is that as the staff dug into this last week, they came up with things like, we really need to focus on where the students are. We haven't had them for a year. So if we create a safe learning environment, then our students will be able to tackle the skills they need to have. I didn't have to tell them that. They constructed that. But I provided them with the question. You provided me with the goals. And now we have a whole staff that has built into it. I know I'm here to share about the students, but to get to the students, it's the work that we do with our staff so that our staff owns what we're working towards, so that our staff owns it through constructing it themselves. And that's what we do with our students. So the wheel that you see here is the, are the golden elements of project-based learning, primarily through the work with the Buck Institute. So a lot of the work that our staff has done has been training through the Buck Institute. That is not the only single way of project-based learning. However, it is a tool that is accessible to us as a district and that we've already invested into. So this is what we refer back to. As a school last year, our biggest thing was we tackled, how are we going to do project-based learning and distance learning? What in the world is that going to look like? So one year ago, right now, my staff and I were already talking about what drives our school. So our school is driven by a mission statement that clearly calls out that we do project-based learning. It's on our website. It's what we do and it's why our parents are there. It was through those conversations when the teachers were, how do I use Google Classroom? What seesaw? How am I going to know where they are? They can't log in. We can't. Through that driving question of how do we make learning accessible, we then came up with a way to do Maker World, an event that used to be one night in December that then took an entire month in January. What we learned in our distance learning is that Maker World needs to be a month. We can't do it all in one night. It's not a one shot stop. You've got to take time over a month. So what you have in front of you, if you write down the bit.ly and I can make sure that you get this, these are projects that the classes did last year over time so that students were able to engage in their content standards, but they were able to do it through a driving question and connect with it. That's one of the key components of project-based learning, is that the standards are all in there and that the standards are driven where the students construct the questions that drive the work. So this gives you access to all the projects. Will the projects look different than what we see at other schools? No, because other schools are doing projects as well. And so our district, the gift of having a project-based learning school, is that it's another way for students to learn because it's the medium. It's the how we do it. All of our schools are doing projects. All of our kids are getting access to working on things. Our site has just focused on how do we do this from the onset, not just at the end of a learning piece. It's very intentional, too. You have to really, it's a lot of hard work. It's why you don't want to all be doing it. So when you think of project-based learning, you want to think about it as through projects, students are pulled and woven through the curriculum by meaningful questions to explore and engaging real-world problem to solve or a challenge to design or create something. It's the idea that students are learning what they need to learn, their reading, their writing, their mathematics, their number facts. You've got to know how to do addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. Got to know how to do all those things. But why? Why are we doing that? Why are we spending the time doing that? So our students are intentionally pulled and woven through, like a braid with different colors, through the content, through their projects. So when you look at that other bit.ly, you can see in our Maker World ways that the classroom teachers did that. So take a moment. Has your definition changed of what it might look like in the classroom, what it might sound like in the classroom? When we did our Maker World last year, we have a whole website. So if you go to that bit.ly, I made this very digitally interactive. So when the Wi-Fi works again, you'll be able to see that we had guest speakers that came and spoke with the children. We had projects and workshops for parents to learn more about PBL. And we had teachers who led workshops for students to be able to go deeper in the tools that you might use in making a project. And so we're really focusing on how when we're doing lessons, you might walk into a class and they're using their rulers for measuring because the teacher knows, we're going to be making a race car track later in science and I need their measurements to be accurate and precise. So it's the teacher knowing, we're going towards this project, so I need to develop their habits and their skill sets beforehand so that they're able to do that project in the end. We spend a lot of time at our school talking about the importance of taking risks. So we call that the maker mindset. And through that maker mindset, we build in the practices of trying things and then trying it again. Because often we'll find, some of our little ones, they might be really good at something, there's always room to make something better. So the kids have learned, Mrs. Lundie's never content. I'm excited about things and I'm happy about things, but there's always ways to make things stronger. So for example, last year, we spent a lot of time talking about feedback. How do you give feedback? But also, how do you take feedback? How do you hear something about what you're doing and then be able to do something with it and still feel like you're on the right track? That's little people's egos. It's adult people's egos. And so as we go through that practice of how do we work through that, how do we, the staff, they have really engaged in this practice in their own work and they're so open to letting me come into the classroom. They now know when I come in, they can literally put me to work and that I'm only there to help them. Because we're all growing. And they also know I count on them to go to them. So we're living this maker mindset as adults and in which I'm seeing it being applied to our students. This just provides you a visual of all the different ways that we weave things in. So I love standards. I enjoy the S-Back test. I think the LPAC has something for us to learn about our own instruction. I think that we should have standards-based report cards. I think that we should have curriculum that teachers can use. But I think we have to drive it through students' questioning skill set. And I think students need to have access to materials and tools and resources to be able to create and build once they have learned and are practicing these standards. So when you take all those ideas outside, our school has this amazing garden and access to the Laguna de Santa Rosa Trail. That is brought in every day into our classrooms. During hybrid instruction, one of the highlights that I felt on our campus was how intentional our teachers were with tying in the outside because it was safer, but how it aligned with their science or their history, social science, or how they could write about it or how they could draw about it. So my teachers were learning, ah, the outside is just an extended part of my classroom. So I'm excited because we just got a mini Noah Garden grant so that we're able to get some more planters outside our back room. We have these doors that go to the back of our school so that the teachers can actually be in the classroom and have students outside so they can have that indoor-outdoor learning experience. It's also about tying in what students see on their own trips and their own life experiences. So during distance learning, we spent a lot of time like, look outside your window. The moon is going to be full tonight. Catch the phases of the moon. Total first grade standard. In fact, first grade standard is supposed to be to catch the shadows, but you can't help but notice the moon and the shape that it's changing. But that came from the kids. So then how do you document that? How do you show that? So it's a lot of weaving and then you just kind of pull those kids through, which makes it really accessible for all the students in our school. It makes it so that no matter where we are in our learning or where our strengths are, we have an entry point. That's the universal design of learning. That's one of the focuses of our district. It's one of the major professional learnings we did last year. And this allows teachers to plan from the onset, how are my lessons accessible to every kid in my classroom? So when we're talking about our kids in the classroom, yes, we want to have all of our different kids there. Yes, we want them all included, but it's really about how are we making this space so that every voice is heard? How are we making that happen? That comes from us. That's on our shoulders. We can't ask all kids to stand up. Not all of us have that kind of confidence. But we, as the educators, it is our charge to make that space so that every kid has a chance to shine. Getting to do volcanoes with Alka-Seltzer and things isn't just for our kids who are gifted. We need every child to have that experience because that's when you have something to talk about. Everyone wants to talk about fizzy water. Every kid has a way to describe it. Every kid has a theory of why it's happening. So we need to do that with every child. So in closing, before tonight, I thought PBL was blank. This is you thinking. Now I think it is blank and it changed when blank. So I want you to metacognitive. Before tonight, what did you think PBL was? Now you're thinking it's this. And what did you hear tonight that might have changed your mind? That's our little school. It's amazing. It's pretty fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was great. We are going to move on to 5B, understanding the return to school guidance. Good. I'm sorry. There it is. This one? Oh, here we go. Thank you for your patience. Oh, there we go. There we go. Okay. Thank you for your patience. I'm going to give you an overview of the guidance that we received during the summer. Myra, could you take your mask down?
Sure.
Thank you.
I want to provide you with an overview of the guidance that we received during the summer. You know, just a little overview here. First of all, I always want to acknowledge the fact that the information presented here is the most recent and this is changing. And sometimes as much as every 36 hours, there's a little bit of a change, a little nuance. So we have to be aware that the type, the guidance does change. So this is coming from CDC, CDPH, calocea, and it really could be changing as response to the Delta variant. So one of the things that I want to remind folks is although CDC provides guidance, we are really have to follow the CDPH. So that's the guiding post as well as the calocea. So tonight, we're going to talk about the overview of the CDPH guidance, masking, quarantine, and recommendations for exposed individuals. So when we look at the guidance, it's really more of a modification. So there's some of the similarities that we had last year. So there's a few, a few changes. And the foundational principle, which is really important to me, is that all students must have access to safe, full-time instruction. So that's one thing that you're going to see as we go through the guidances, there's a real effort and focus on keeping kids in school. Of course, safety first, but keeping kids in school. All schools must follow the guidance and the next revision is due November 1st. So right now, we're operating under the revisions that came to us in July and then in November, they'll be revisited and could be shifts and there could be shifts from then also. Highlights of the guidance is universal masking indoors is a prerequisite to reopening. So we cannot reopen schools without that universal masking in place. So when everyone's indoors, we're all wearing our masks as we see here tonight. There's an emphasis on getting schools and staff vaccinated. So we're going to see a lot of pushout. You're seeing a lot of commercials because that is how we're going to control that spread of the virus and the Delta variant. Targeted quarantine practices to minimize the disruption. I'm going to go into the quarantine a little bit and what that means, but it's a little bit different than the past where we sent everybody home. We have a little bit of a flexibility there. School employees are subject to calocea, so we have to follow those regulations, the emergency temporary standards. And then all school districts need to post their safety plans on the website. This is, this is not new, but this is a requirement. We are currently updating our plan. It was updated in June and again, we have to update it because things have changed. We have new schedules in our schools, so we're going to be doing, providing that update. And we're also working on our family handbook that needs a few changes for our families. That's a little bit shorter document. We want to make sure that we're accurate and communicating the most current. So in terms, in terms of the face mask, K-12 students and staff are required to wear masks indoors unless exempted. So a child may have a doctor's note, they may have a 504 plan because of the doctor's note, and that's the only reason we can exempt someone from a mask. Exempted individuals must use something else. So they would have a face shield and a drape. So they must have something to protect them, but they're exempted from the face mask. We have to develop protocols. So what happens when a child doesn't want to wear a mask? Or we have to provide some alternative educational setting if someone is not comfortable wearing the mask. So a parent says, I don't want my child to wear a mask. We have to provide something else. We all know that we have the Virtual Learning Academy, so that would be our option. We also have, you know, maybe a parent says, you know, I'm not going to provide my child a mask. We have plenty of PPE on campus and plenty of masks, so we will give a child a mask daily to make sure that all of our students have masks. When a mask can't be used for teaching or developmental reasons, we would have a face shield again and an enak drape. So masking guidelines for staff. Staff must wear masks in common areas regardless of their vaccine status, vaccine or not. You must have a mask on. Individuals may only remove their mask when they're alone in their closed office or a room by themselves with no one else in the, in the area or they're eating or drinking and, and if there's an exemption. So that's the only time that we can remove our masks. Otherwise, we would have them. And for example, here, I've removed my mask, but I'm well, more than six feet away from anyone in the, in the area. Rationale, why, why is masking necessary? This eliminates the physical distancing. If you remember, last year, we had to have six feet, then we went to three feet. Well, if we all wear our face masks, we determine that we can all be in the room within close proximity. Even here tonight, we're closer because that requirement has been eliminated because we're wearing our face mask. It assists schools in preventing shutdowns. So that we know that we don't have to have those lengthy quarantines because we have our face mask and that's keeping us safe. And it's also, we really want to limit the disruption of learning, which is what's occurred. Anyway, we also have indoor masking is one of the most effective ways to prevent in-school transmission as of yet. You know, we opened for hybrid, we've opened for the first day and we have not had any, and we started, remind everyone that on July 20th, we started with Richard Crane, we haven't had no in-school cases. The cases that we've had are community-based. So there's a family gathering, a child's participating in sports and then they come to school, but it's not happening at school. So that's, that's why we have these precautions in place. Masking controls, both the air saw and the droplet, just as we know when we sneeze, when we know when we, we may have a runny nose, that's how we're spreading it. So the masks protect us from spreading or causing that COVID exposure. So I want to define close contact, or you may remember this. Close contact is six feet or less and more than 15 minutes exposure over 24 hours. So if I'm in a room with someone and then all of a sudden they test positive and we were close together, working in, in close proximity, then I've been exposed and, you know, we have to, you know, consider and create, create that communication and to inform folks. Recommendations for vaccinated individuals. So anyone that's fully unvaccinated and are exposed, we don't, we do not have to quarantine. So if I've been vaccinated, I don't have to quarantine if I'm asymptomatic. I still have to make sure that I'm not experiencing any symptoms over the next 14 days. Remember, the vaccine doesn't prevent us from getting COVID, it just makes it more mild so we can still get L. I've known people that have come down with COVID after being vaccinated. We recommend that vaccinated individuals test three to five days after being exposed. So we want to still make sure that we don't have symptoms and also take that test as an extra precaution and definitely notify if there's any symptoms in development. Okay, so here's when we get into unvaccinated individuals. So we know that students 12 and above have had the opportunity to vaccinate and not 100% of them are vaccinated, so we want to make sure that we're, we're careful about that. So for students only, if both students were wearing a masked, mask and they were in close contact, they can continue to attend school. This is different. Before, we would have sent everyone home. Okay? So what, what, what are the, kind of the criteria there? If they're symptomatic, continue, they are symptomatic, they continue to wear a mask as required, undergo at least test, the testing twice a week in that 10-week quarantine and quarantine of all extracurricular activities. So this is what we call modified quarantine. You've been exposed, but you had your mask on, you're not having symptoms, so you can continue to attend school. What you shouldn't be doing is playing sports or going on with your continuing. You need to, you need to make sure that you can attend school, but eliminate those extracurriculars. So this is that modified quarantine, which is a little bit of a change. For unvaccinated employees, they must continue to quarantine for 10 to 14 days. So they might, and after they're released and they have a negative test, they can come back to work. But if you're unvaccinated, you must quarantine, which is a little bit different from, from folks that are vaccinated. They do not have to quarantine. So additional guidance, we don't have to physical distance because we have a mitigating strategy in place, which are our face masks. Ventilation should be optimized. That means we want to push that air through that room. We want to open the doors and the windows. In fact, if you, if you're on a, on a, in a vehicle or we take a field, we decide that we're going to do field trips, you would have to open the windows. So there's very specific about that ventilation. Staff and students with symptoms should not be attending school. Screening testing is recommended, but not required. We are going to be providing testing. We're going to be, we're looking at a contract with a company that provides the results between 24 to 48 hours. Again, because we really want to limit that interruption. We can make it available. We certainly can't mandate it, but we want to make it available and accessible to all students and staff. Students are, schools are required to report COVID cases to the local public health department. Sometimes people will say, well, what's going to happen? Well, sometimes the public health department tells us what's happened. We have to convey the information, convey exactly what happened, what was the type of exposure? And they may say, hey, you need to shut down that class. Or no, you can continue with the modified quarantine. So sometimes the decision is out of our control. So we have that guidance, but we're still working with county public health. Just want to make folks aware of that. We, we have to provide an isolation area. What's different about the isolation area is we used to have one tent for anyone with symptoms. Now we must have a tent for vaccinated individuals with symptoms and folks that are unvaccinated. So now we're going to have to have two areas because those individuals have to stay separate. So now, we're going to have to have two areas because those individuals have to stay separate. The other thing to remember is the hand hygiene is definitely something that we need to continue practicing or reminding students of. We will have sanitizer in all classrooms, and even when we go out to play on the recess, we will squirt them with hand sanitizer. They can go out and play with the equipment, but before they go in, we've got to have more hand sanitizer to make sure that we're keeping the kids as healthy as possible. Daily cleaning is required, and physical distancing, we still need some distancing while the kiddos are eating. Any questions?
How come we don't have access to rapid tests?
Well, we had others, and we haven't had the availability, and now more companies are coming up with the rapid testing. So it does take a little bit longer. We've had Color Lab. We just found out of a new company that works in conjunction with Crisis Go, and that's what we're researching.
So for staff that are unvaccinated, that have to get tested every week, how's that going to work? I mean, if you test them on Friday, and you don't get the results back till Monday or Tuesday, and they're positive, and they've been in their classroom or in their department potentially spreading the virus?
That's a possibility, so we would have to do contact tracing. So, you know, this is all preventative. We're hoping that no one gets, you know, that will be exposed, but we definitely have to be on our game. And contact tracing takes about three hours per case. Look out in the audience. Yep, three hours per case. That's what was reported last year, and it's continuing to happen.
If I heard you right, you said that people can choose not to have COVID testing done? So if students were in a, if they were symptomatic or exposed to somebody and not masked, your report said that they have to be tested before they can come back, but what if a parent says, "I don't want you to test my kid"?
Then they're quarantined the full time.
Okay. So they don't need a negative COVID test to come back? They could do the 14-day quarantine and then come back?
Yes.
And then, how are lunches working in the elementary school? Because trying to keep kids distant, are we keeping classrooms together? Are they still mixing at lunch? Or what's kind of, what's a day in elementary look like?
That's a great question. If you remember before, it was 12 to 14 kids, it was, you know, limited cohorts. What we're doing is we're aware and cognizant of the cohorts. So for example, when I worked with Teresa Raffoni, she's, we were very specific, we're going to have the kids stay together. The thing that we know is really critical is that teachers need to keep a seating chart. So as children move throughout the school, let's say they, you know, they move to the library, we want a seating chart of who is sitting next to who. Because then, it's easier for the contact tracing. So, you know, if a child is, you know, if I'm sick and I'm close to Caitlin, okay, we know we have to do contact tracing for Caitlin, but maybe not Dr. Pettis because she's further away, right? So we're going to be able to control kind of the contact tracing. So, and we've, we're, the other thing that we have discussed is, on the playground, we have areas, and the kids are really fine with it. Where they, at Richard Crane, they're going to work, they're going to be in the equipment area this week, and then the next week, they're going to work, they're going to move to the basketball area. And then the school has been very proactive and had materials, you know, equipment for them to play in those areas. So that, we're limiting, we're limiting that, although we don't have to, we are limiting that because we want, because if, should we have a case, the more, the more contact that the child has been in contact, the more contact tracing and more impact will be to the school.
So Lef and I sit next to each other in third grade. We're going to library next to each other, we're going to computer lab next to each other.
And Lef happens to get sick, we're going to call your parent, Michelle, and say, "Hey, we have an exposure."
And then I just want to make sure, you know, we have the guidelines, and I know they've been going out to all the different schools, that we just make sure each of our schools, all the way from elementary up to high school, are very consistent. So there were some challenges, I know, with orientation of some schools let parents come on campus. Some schools did not let parents come on campus. And consistency in messaging is going to be the key here. I think the second schools kind of start going off messaging, even with the best intentions, then the guidance doesn't really mean anything anymore. One school's doing one thing, and another school's doing another thing. So just, that would be my concern, is that we make sure that we're all playing by the same rules.
Absolutely. We did spend an entire week together discussing this, and it was a very animated conversation because we're like, what if, you know, and what all the schools agreed to is, we must follow the guidance. We must follow the guidance. We know, you know, because it just, it'll be easier for us. And, you know, definitely need to know, one of the things, you brought another important thing, another criteria up, is that parents on campus should be limited. One of the things that's very hard for educators is when a parent is leaving their five or six-year-old off at school. You know, we want to be, we want to be kind and make sure that the child is okay. So we're going to let those parents onto the playground, you know, and make sure that they know where the classroom is, but we are not letting the parents inside the classroom. It's just a little extra layer of precaution. But definitely, we will, that is the goal, to be as consistent as possible.
I have to agree with Michelle, because I heard from people today that were really concerned going into campus, and there was coffee for the parents, parents were taking off their masks, they were all gathering. I know it was the first day of school, we all want things to be normal, but I just think we have to be really careful. We start getting that many people, even outside in a small area. I would hate that we have an outbreak in here that 100 people are sick.
And really, that, you know, that is concerning to me, that we have folks eating on campus. Because remember, once we remove the mask, if someone, you know, and we don't know, you know, we could be sick, you know, we're asymptomatic, and that can be a challenge. So definitely is a concern, and we will be reminding and working with our school leaders about, on that.
We just want to make sure anything that we give our schools, that it's enforceable and followable. If we make rules that don't make sense or aren't enforceable, then they're of no use. So I just want to make sure that we...
Definitely, agreed.
And then, I don't want to be like the Debbie Downer, but let's say I send my child to school with a knowingly sick. Is there any repercussions? Is there any like, hey, you've now sent your kid to school multiple times with a fever or different things like that? Is there, how do we educate families that that is a major risk, and you are, you know, risking a lot of people's, you know, safety and stuff? So is there education that we can give to families that do that, or what's kind of...
Definitely, that is, that is ongoing message that we will be providing. One of the things that I would like to do after this evening, and I have been working on it, haven't quite finished it, is really encapsulating some of this information in a newsletter. So we know, we know that we can communicate in many ways, and it may not get to everyone. So, you know, we have this presentation tonight, I appreciate all the questions. We're also going to send a newsletter out. One of the things that I would like to do is send out a graphic, something that kind of depicts, I'm working on that, getting it so it's accurate, that depicts what happens in a case of COVID, a quarantine. Because I want us to continue to push that out in our media. But we do often hear that, "I didn't get that." So we're going to continue to try different forms and methods of communication to make sure that we keep our community informed and remind folks. And one of the things that we do extraordinarily well in this district is we have some outstanding leaders that provide weekly newsletters, which are very impressive. And I'm going to ask them to help with the messaging so that not only is it coming from the district, but we can put in a little blurb in the staff newsletter, so that's going out to all of our schools also. And, you know, people have been, are so forthcoming in saying, you know, prior to COVID, you know, you give a little aspirin, you send the kid to school and go, "Well, maybe I won't get a call." And then at the middle, you know, these are wonderful educators that needed to go, you know, go to work. So we do have to be cognizant of the fact and really be aware that if a child, and it'll be a tough time because a runny nose is quite common, it may not be COVID, but we have to be very cautious during these times.
Are we still using the thermometers on the sites?
We are not, because that is not a requirement and not necessary, and a fever doesn't necessarily an indicator of symptoms, so.
So as we're going to be entering the flu season, and we have RSV out there and cold season, how are we going to differentiate between a kid who's standing there with the fever and sick? Do they have COVID, or are they just sick?
That's the tricky part, Krista. We will have to send those kids home. You know, we cannot have, you know, the only, the only instances, if they, for example, we have some, you know, we know that this child has allergies. Doctors like, "This is allergies, hands down." And we have a doctor's note, then we could admit that child. But if they have symptoms, we will have to send them home.
I wonder, what are those kids doing when they're home? If you're sick for a couple of days? Because we can't turn the cameras on, right? So are they doing just worksheets? Are they, is it excuse absence? Like, how do they not become truant? Sorry, that's a lot of questions.
This is, these are all the questions that are going through our minds also, right? So what, you know, what we've done, for example, we had, we had an example at Richard Crane. The teacher prepared packets for every child. So we do, we, you know, we do provide the packets, right? And we also have been toying with the idea of preparing more generic packets. So we are looking at every option possible. If it's a prolonged, excuse me?
Mass facts are always great.
If it's a prolonged, if it's a prolonged absence, they can, you know, join the Virtual Learning Academy. So we're just going to have to have option A, B, C, D, E, F in our back pocket. So that's something that we're continually talking about. The big goal was, my message to everyone is like, we've got to get schools open, but that's, that's the game plan, is what are we doing to make sure that the kids aren't losing instruction? We know we have modified quarantine, but the reality is, we will, we will have kids that are absent, and we're going to have to, you know, be cognizant of that. And when we, and when we're sending kids home because they may have symptoms, we need to, we're going to be coding it differently in our student system also. Because we don't want to jeopardize a family or impact them saying you're truant when they had a symptom and they were exposed, and we want to just keep them safe. Trustee Nelson?
If they're sent home and they're absent, how does that affect their attendance? How does that affect our ADA?
We will code it differently in our, in our, in our system.
Okay, and the other question I have is, are we still having Crisis Go at every school?
Yes, we believe that it is imperative that we continue using the Crisis Go. You know, it's not easy, it's tricky, we've got to get everyone processed, but really, that helps with contact tracing because we, so, you know, so if someone becomes, you know, Caitlin becomes sick, we can look and see where she's been and who she's come in contact with so that we can do the contact tracing.
So how effective or how traceable is Crisis Go for, you said we haven't had any breakouts from school exposure, but kids coming with exposure elsewhere? How effective has Crisis Go been in tracing and/or trapping for that?
Well, what it does is, every child has to check in. So what we're, what we're monitoring is, you know, if some, you know, everybody's well, you know, everybody's, they're all cleared to enter, but then someone comes down with symptoms, we know where that child is. You know, we have the seating charts, we know where the child has been, what classroom and where they've been. So we can kind of trace where the child's been, who's the child been sitting next to. So it's a monitoring system with dashboards and data that we can look at.
So it's not just when they check in?
Right.
What's the turnaround if a child got quarantined for 14 days? How fast could you get him into the Virtual Academy?
We have to, what is, getting into the academy, we have to transition them out in five days. How, do we have a criteria for that, or Dr. Pettis?
So for the Virtual Academy, they would, we begin at 15 days and more. Anything less than 15 days, but three or greater is what we're looking at, as short-term independent study.
So we could have a child be exposed and quarantined for 14 days if their parents don't want to test. They could come back to school, they could get quarantined again. What happens if you've got a 14-day quarant, so you've, every time a child's quarantined, they lose 10 days potentially of school instruction?
You know, if we have that continually happening, I think we'd have to revisit the Virtual Learning Academy, you know, and see what we do. You know, because if we're going to have that constant pattern, we've got to connect that child to instruction and to, you know, to some teaching time. You know, because we, that's going to be just as disruptive as, you know...
So we could theoretically turn them on to some sort of an independent study a lot quicker than a Virtual Academy?
I think so. I think we would do whatever it takes. Part of the requirement, and I'm not the expert, part of the requirement with the Virtual Academy is we have to have an intake process. So the meeting, that the parent meets with the staff member, and we, you know, come up with a plan for the Virtual Academy. That can happen quicker once everyone's settled, but what we're seeing is this constant fluctuation. So we're, there's much more interest. A few weeks ago, eh, it was really slow. Now, we have this, this increased interest in our academy.
So if a student is quarantining and they're, even though we're going to code it differently for absentism, it will affect our ADA? Is that correct?
Yes.
Unless they're on independent study, short-term or longer, then that work can be, can accrue attendance in proportion to the work completed.
So question, when does our funding go back to directly correlated with ADA? I know we have, we've been, due to the COVID and things, so has the state said that this year, we're going to be funded on ADA, or is it next year?
We're in the final year of the, you know...
Get out of jail, yeah, type thing. So starting next year?
ADA cliff is 22, 23.
Okay, so that makes me take a, you know, a sigh of relief. You know, not that I, you know, but from a financial standpoint, so. So we've got one more, we've got this whole calendar year of school, but starting next August, hopefully, this is behind us. My mic went, where'd my mic go? Okay, so it ran away.
It went all the way down.
Yeah, so, okay, good. That answers my question. Thank you.
And I know there's concern, and there's a lot of what-ifs, and I may not have the answer for the what-ifs. We're going to have to tackle each case individually and keep people, you know, I want to keep folks safe, and I want to keep students in school because that is the best for all of them. So at least there is a little bit of flexibility with this guidance, and again, this could change at any minute, and we will have a change in revisions in November 1st. By November 1st, they'll be...
I have one other question for you. Do we have a timetable on when we're going to have an answer about field trips?
Currently, we're operating under last year's guidance. So the transportation, transporting kids for field trips is prescribed by the federal rules, and it's no more than two kids for a seat, every other window open. And I asked about private, because one of the things that sometimes some schools do will take private cars, it is not recommended. That only family members travel in a car. So they should, they shouldn't be traveling in private cars, so I think bus would be the preferred option. At this point in time, we were looking for new guidance, we're waiting for new guidance, but overnight field trips are not recommended because of the possible transmission with folks, with kiddos being in the same area.
That brings me to my second question. Last year, the monthly payment that was made to EXL at Lawrence Jones was basically suspended because there were no trips, kids were learning it from home. What happens this year? Is that money still going to be collected even though there's no trips? Can we get an answer on that? It's a lot of money for parents.
I can certainly find out.
Okay, thank you.
What about school, or, I'm sorry, sports teams, transportation? Are there going to be busing teams this year?
Most probably, and there's, athletics has very specific guidance, and I need to, I need to connect with the folks to talk about the, what the guidance is. There's very specific guidance, and if you remember, several months ago, it was related to the tiers. We had to have a plan, so we have a plan that's attached, and it's an appendix as part of our COVID safety plan, and we need to find out what the differences, what the differences are in terms of the guidance. At one point in time, we were required to test all athletes for COVID, and then it became optional. They didn't have to get tested, but what I want to make sure that we do is that we do... But what I want to make sure that we do is that we offer it. So if a child, if a student wants to be tested, they have the opportunity to be tested. One of the challenges is if we don't provide it, can they get the test? Can they get it, you know? And that's the struggle. If parents don't have access, I want to provide it as a district. So, and that's what the S R funds are for.
So high school athletics is starting, I mean, it's already started. And competitions are going to be going to the plan as right now? That they'll be traveling together?
And we do have a plan and that's the, the plan that we're using. It's part of the COVID safety plan. I can certainly get that out to the trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, public comments. Items not on the agenda. First up, we have Jim Gregoretti. Sure.
I'm going to take Principal Lundie's lead and take off my mask because my glasses have been fogging up all day. Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Perez. Both Dr. Perez, I should say. Board President Gillies and CRP USD Board of Trustees. My name is Jim Gregoretti and I live at 1197 C. Yellow Circle here in Runard Park. I'm a sixth-grade math, science, and technology teacher at Lawrence E. Jones Middle School. Both my wife and I are proud to educate young minds here at CRP USD. This is my second year as the bargaining chair for RIPSEA. And it has been an honor to represent my fellow teachers for the last six years on the bargaining team. During this past year, RIPSEA has shown its willingness to work with the district on a number of items, including the distance learning MOU, the in-person hybrid MOU, the extended school year MOU, and the site-specifics MOUs for Rancho Cerrado Tech High, Tech Middle, and Lawrence Jones Middle School, and most recently, the Virtual Learning Academy MOU. I'm speaking to you tonight regarding the recent counterproposal that the district presented to RIPSEA on August 9th. The process began when RIPSEA sent our sunshine letter to the district on April 14th. Our letter was eventually addressed at the May board meeting. We were finally able to have a negotiation meeting on June 9th, at which point we were told by the district that it needed more time. On June 10th, Dr. Perez sent an email that thanked RIPSEA for its comprehensive and thoughtful proposal. She then stated that the negotiations team's goal is to present you with a high-quality counterproposal, and that will require some time. I then sent an email dated June 15th to Dr. Perez and I CC'd the Board of Trustees. In this email, I included the Educational Employees Relations Act, EERA, Section 3543.7, which states, "The duty to meet and negotiate in good faith requires the parties to begin negotiations prior to the adoption of the final budget for the ensuing year sufficiently in advance of such adoption date so there is adequate time for an agreement to be reached or for the resolution of an impasse." I don't know if the board has adopted a budget yet, but two months after our first negotiations in June, the district's counterproposal was uninspiring and frankly unacceptable for the hard-working men and women of RIPSEA. After all that our teachers did to ensure that our students got the best possible education during distance learning and again during the in-person hybrid return, after hearing community members call for teachers to resign, or worse, be replaced by others who were not so worried about getting their vaccinations, the district offered a 1.5% wage increase and a one-time $1,000 bonus. The current Consumer Price Index is at 3.96%. The counter presented by the district is not even half of the CPI. I just shared with the board some information regarding the most recent wage increases with our union partners in neighboring districts. You can see how our members reacted when they saw what other districts have negotiated for their wage increases. Many have multi-year agreements. RIPSEA also wants to secure a multi-year deal with the district. Please understand that we appreciated the 3.84% wage increase for the 2018 and 2019 school years. But the district still did better in the end as COLA went from 3.84% when we settled to 5.07 by the end of the school year. This list does not include the most recent settlement at Old Adobe District, which received a 5% increase last year, a 7% increase this year, and a 5% increase for the next year. This three-year package represents a 17% increase over three years. SRTA's agreement at the end of last year included a 6.5% wage increase for this year, 4% for next year, and 4.5% in year three, for a total of 15% over three years. Many years ago, RIPSEA used the slogan, "Plan for us." Our new slogan is, "It's time for us." It is time for the district to prioritize its most valuable resource, its teachers. It's time for the district to recognize that the average teacher salary in the state of California is $84,000, while the average CRP USD teacher salary is $63,000. It's time for the district to recognize that other districts are paying its starting teachers, which is a BA plus 45, almost $60,000, while our district pays $47,326. In recent articles in the PD, the median sale price of a single-family home in Sonoma County reached a record of $825,000 in June, an all-time high. And the hourly wage to be able to survive in Sonoma County is at least $38 per hour. If the goal of this district is to attract and retain qualified teachers, we have some serious work to do. We are scheduled to have another negotiation session with the district on September 23rd, after we receive the district's unaudited actuels on September 15th. The district has over a month to prepare for this. I truly hope that they can present a high-quality proposal that truly reflects its commitments to its educators. Remember, it's time for us. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tracy Ewens.
I'm going to set my own timer just for a second because I didn't plan. Hi, my name's Tracy Ewens and I've been up here before. I teach second grade over at Evergreen. I'm a parent in this community. I apologize for my attire. I just came from coaching soccer. And I live here in Runard Park. And I kind of just like, want to tell you about my day. So we're all living in crisis right now, like, all of us. Like, we're wearing a mask everywhere I go. I sometimes feel almost a little like handmade tailor's. Like, I can't just speak my voice because my mouth is covered. And what is happening in my classroom, so I'll just speak to my classroom, and I know the numbers are changing all the time at schools. So, for example, my kind of crisis this morning started with sending my amazing daughters off to school so excited. Normally, this is like a cry for me, like, oh my God, they're going to seventh grade. They're getting so much bigger. But I'm so excited that they're with their friends. I'm so happy that students are in person. And then, as I walked away, I kind of went to my crisis motive. I feel that if you're sending your kid to school right now, you might as well just assume they're going to get COVID. And I'm grateful that my children are healthy and they should, they're, knock on wood, going to make it out of it. So with that, I get to school. Yesterday morning, I had 28 students assigned to my second-grade class, where in our contract it says to try and keep them at 24. We, I pay Measure D money that's supposed to be keeping class sizes down. And by the end of yesterday, I was at 29 students. Some of my coworkers got new students a half an hour into school today. It's stated somewhere, I believe it's in our contract, that if you get a new student, you have 24 hours to at least turn around and get ready for them. We're not doing that because it's a being of school. As a teacher, I want them to be welcome in my classroom the minute they walk in. Like, this is the best thing ever. Second graders are amazing. And so first thing, they come in, I check my Crisis Go. And seven kids haven't done Crisis Go. So they're, whatever the word was, it says, I need to send them to the office. This is the moment when I'm supposed to be welcoming these children. And I say, ah, sorry, you got to go to the office. Haven't seen their faces. They had to head down the office, already kind of a little fear of like, why am I going to the office? I just got here and, you know, I have this teacher that I've only seen like this. So that gets settled. They come in, I can't start my instruction right away because there's no reason to start with 29 students and seven of them are gone. I move around my room a lot, so like, I purposely go from place to place. And I can't move because the chairs are too close to each other. So I'm like, oh, I guess after school I'm going to be moving chairs because I can't get between these tables. Then, kind of going through the day, doing regular procedures of like, showing them where the bathroom is. Have you seen a line of 29 seven-year-olds? Because I haven't. When I started teaching this district 23 years ago, we had 27-year-olds. They take a long, long time to move from place to place. So to get them out the door and train them. And they're out, half of them are out, I'm by the door. I'm like, I'm going to pull this off somehow. Try to get them to move from place to place, takes forever. Then we go to do something that would be really basic, second grade, beginning of the year. And I've taught second grade for 14 years. So I know what a basic second grader looks like coming in. I'm aware that they're the end of first grade. These kiddos, like, have academics and the teachers taught, but they're missing basic things. Families aren't drawing with their kids. They're not showing them how to draw hands. Like, the developmental things I saw this morning kind of like blew my mind. I was like, wow, I need to go to a first-grade teacher because I have so many kids that can't write a sentence. I can't read their best guess spelling. Second grade, I can read your best guess spelling, your phonetic spelling. I can read it. Remember, there's 29. Okay, so then I look at the students, they're all talking, they all want to talk to each other, right? So I kind of look at one kid, I'm like, you look like somebody that might do better sitting kind of by yourself. Would you like to sit by yourself? He's like, yeah, that sounds great. So I give him a table. He goes and sits by himself and proceeds to take his face with his mouth, rubbing it back and forth over the table over and over again. I'm like, are you okay? He's like, oh, no, just rubbing my face. Oh, great, let me, I've got 28 over here right now. No problem. So then we go and I have the sweetest kid. And I go back into my teacher motive, like, God, you've got to remember the kids. You can't see with the kids that are having the behavior. So I go over to this sweet little millipin and I'm like, hi, trying to talk to him, cannot hear a single word of his little mouth. I actually don't know if he speaks Spanish or English right now because I could not hear him. So I'm like, maybe he doesn't understand me. But over there, I got a kid rubbing his face on the desk, so I need to go deal with that. So meanwhile, then we're allowed water bottles in class. You all heard what I did when I accidentally dropped my water bottle. Imagine 29 second graders with water bottles in class. So I go over all of that. So, right, kids arguing with me over things because they forget that this is school. They haven't been doing this. So I don't know the solution. There, I don't know if the other school sites are impacted like this. We need to get another teacher. Like, I, I assume other schools are also have this. The numbers for our schools weren't in the board meeting agenda. I tried to look it up last night. So go through this, exhausted, done, have my lunch. Oh, by the way, I get out at noon today. I have a second grader come up and go, 8:11. Uh, Ms. Ewens, I'm ready to go home. I'm like, yeah, well, that's great. We've got another hour. Wait for tomorrow when we're here till 3:00. Then, end of the day, I've been working, I'm like, I got to leave here with my stuff set up. I have my own personal family I need to go spend time with. I need to hear about my daughter's days. I need to do this. And 3:45, my admin, who I'm actually like super loving, comes in and goes, Tracy, we need to tell you something. I'm like, well, if you're going to tell me I'm getting a new student, I'm probably going to use bad words. And she went, I'm just going to tell you and I'm going to leave quickly. And we're friends. I was like, no, go ahead and tell me. She's like, we have two new students coming tomorrow. They're twins and they need to be in the same class. I haven't cried yet today, might happen. So now I'm at 31 second graders. These two new students haven't been at school. They've been homeschooled, whatever that looks like. They're coming from a family that's in such crisis that they haven't enrolled for school until it started. I don't know what the answer is. So then I come to the board meeting and I'm hearing, we don't want to interrupt learning. There's management going in my room, not like, I'm hoping for some learning. Like, that's my goal. I'm hearing that the essential visitors, like it says, that we can't have volunteers in our class. But then we can have them on campus and they're having coffee. Volunteers cost the district nothing. I think they should be vaccinated or have a COVID test and have proved to be in my classroom. I need help in my classroom. And then I'm also hearing that there's seating charts and guidance and those type of things. I have no seating chart. Yesterday, I didn't even have time to look at my cards that tell me about my students. I just put their names down and I kind of think I know most of their, actually, I know all their names. I'm good at names. So frustrated, exhausted. I'm hoping you guys got the magic wand to like make some teachers happen. This could be happening at other sites. I'm only speaking my truth. That's all I pretty much got. I got a decision tonight. I can go home, spend time with my family, or I can go back to school, prepare for the two new children that are working in crisis to make them feel comfortable in my classroom because right now, they just have chairs. Thank you.
Item 7A, Student Board Member Reports. We'll start with Caitlin.
Hello, everyone. It's very nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me this evening. My name's Caitlin Antonetti. I'm a junior this year at Rancho Cerrado High School. So to get into my report, summer has reached an end and our Cougars are excited to be back in school. The theme for coming back is welcome home to show how, as a school, we're welcoming everyone back into a safe and healthy environment. Rancho has hosted an orientation with tours being led by our very own students, both ASB members and just student leaders on our campus, to show incoming freshmen and others their way around our campus and the classes and our tag building, just giving them an overview of our school. Also during summer, our ASB class has had multiple leadership trainings to further show our leaders how to engage and motivate our students this year. I put together gifts for all staff members, which included an apple and some candies to show our appreciation towards them and to also welcome them to the year just because it is going to be a big adjustment for everyone. One of our main goals this year is to reconnect and welcome all students onto our campus as most sophomores and freshmen haven't been on campus and it's the juniors' first time fully on campus since freshman year. This year, we are also trying to focus on mental health for everyone at Rancho because it's going to be a year full of changes and adapting to our new normal, so to say. Today, with it being our first day of school, we set up our tunnel and welcomed students as they walked in. Posters were put all around the school to promote our ASB cards, mental health, and to welcome everyone. Our students had to log into the Safe to Speak Up app with their QR code. So basically, the teachers are using the Crisis Go app and then our students are using the Safe to Speak Up app. And that's where they can report, like, just the check-in, I guess. So then they get their QR code and can go on to their classes for the day. And on behalf of our ASB class and all students at Rancho, we are excited to start our 2021-2022 school year and thank you for having me this evening.
Madely.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to be here. My name is Madely Denise. I'm a senior at Tech High and I'm so excited to be joining you all today. As we kickstart the 2021-2022 school year, Tech has begun its plan for the new return to campus. In the past few weeks, ASB and Yearbook Together have hosted a Summer Bridge program. This program, unlike orientation, was open to incoming ninth graders but also the 10th graders since most only had a couple of weeks back on campus. The purpose of the Summer Bridge was to prepare our incoming ninth and 10th grade students for the transition back to school and into the technology high school community. Ms. Alvarez and Ms. Campos trained leaders over the course of three days during the last week of July. Starting August 3rd and ending August 5th, students were able to get campus tours, participate in activities where they got to know their classmates, and experience their first Tech High rally with all of it being student-focused and student-led. with all of it being student focused and student led. Leaders focused on the climate and culture of THS as well as sharing tools that students could use in their preparation for high, for high school and becoming lifelong learners. By the end of the first day, students were interacting with each other and starting to build friendships and form a community, something that was seriously lacking during distance learning despite all that we tried. And I personally got a firsthand look at uh, the connections and the communication that was going on during the bridge um, as I was one of the leaders. Um, overall, the program was a success with 95 attendees and 22 leaders participating in the program, uh, which was a third of our school. Because the summer bridge became similar to a traditional orientation, we wanted to make sure that we made the orientation differ from the bridge program while still offering the important, important information to the students like the leadership, community, and the kindness aspect uh, to those who weren't able to attend the bridge. Orientation was held on August 11th and was very much a success. Students voted for their freshman representatives being Joseph Shemel, Aiden Golly, and Jack Amholt. They got a tour of the school and experienced a student panel made up of students from Tech High involved in sports and clubs who could speak and give advice to the incoming freshmen. We also hosted a meet and greet with our new principal, Ms. Spencer, new counselor, Ms. Suarez, and various teachers who came in to campus to participate. New students were also provided with instruction on downloading the Safe to Speak Up app and logging into Power School, Class Link, and Gmail. Junior Riley Bond even made an awesome how to video that was shared with families and available on our ASB YouTube channel. It was a walkthrough through all the processes and it was really detailed and easy to follow. With our school making a return on campus, we wanted to have a central theme for the year that encompasses what this year means for students, teachers, and staff and parents. For the 2021-2022 school year, the Tech High theme will be welcome home. This concept is the perfect description of how our first day back on the Tech High campus went. Students who either attended the bridge or orientation were able to get a head start on making connections with their classmates and were able to create friendships that proved helpful on the first day. When asking members of all grade levels how their first day went, freshmen said fun, scary, and informational. Sophomores said exciting and new. Juniors said tiring, eventful, and different, and seniors said surreal and unexpected. Looking forward, ASB is planning multiple events for the return to campus. We have a club rush uh, that is planned for September 3rd and both an outdoor fall rally and outdoor back to school dance events that are still in the um, wait. Back to school dance scheduled for September 10th as well as an upcoming blood drive on September 21st. These events are still in the preliminary planning stage, but we are so excited to host the back to school dance on our campus for the second time. This time, however, it will be with masks. Uh, that is all for this report. Thank you so much, you all, for having me.
Thank you. 7C, receipt of official correspondence. C1, letter from Sonoma County Superintendent of Schools. I did what? Oh, sorry.
7B.
7B, Ripsia's report. I apologize.
That's all right.
You can come here if you would.
I have done this before.
Apparently neither have I. I keep missing things. Goodness.
All right, hi, everyone. Okay, I'll just slide this over for a sec.
You can take your mask down if you want, so we could hear you a little bit better.
Um.
It's up to you. You don't have to.
I'll leave it on, thank you though. Okay, so good evening. Board of Trustees, President Skiles, Trustees Brown, Jimino, Nelson, Wing, and Superintendent Perez. Um, good evening. Um, Assistant Superintendent Perez as well, and Mindy, and the little stargazers here have been working so hard all, all week.
So my name is Denise Trenfalia. Students call me Ms. T. I'm this year's Ronard Park Currati Educators Association President. I'm proud to teach English Language Arts and Career Readiness at El Camino High School. This is my 23rd year teaching in this district. It's always been an honor to work in this community with our students and my colleagues. It was great to see so many attend the district's kickoff yesterday morning. We saw familiar faces, welcomed new ones, and belly laughed with the mascots. There was an air of excitement that we would actually be really opening up. I also want to acknowledge all those who received service pins, starting at five years and ending with 35 years of service. Thank you for your dedication to the CRPUSD District. We have remarkable educators, steadfast support staff, custodians, and talented leadership. Today was a day. Most of us didn't sleep well last night due to a mix of excitement and anxiety. I arrived at the Rancho campus already humming with the buzz of students. Students were early. Students were wearing masks. Students were happy to be back at school. Normally, most students hardly respond to a good morning as I make my way through the quad. Today, students I didn't even know responded to my greetings of, good morning, welcome back. I'm so glad you're here. These students looked me in the eye and said, glad to be back. Good luck too. My own students were gracious, patient, thankful, cooperative. We had login issues. We had adjustments to long bouts of wearing a mask. We're getting used to another transition in this district, this time in a full brick and mortar classroom. I was so impressed with our students. I'm so impressed with our teachers right now. One of our dearest campus supervisors, Laura Defendal, is our campus fairy of kindness and cheer. She started a couple of years ago Rocks for Ronard Park. I think that's the name, correct me if I'm wrong. It's on Facebook. She and her crew secretly paint small rocks that have flowers and dolphins and affirmations, and she hides them all over campus. The idea is that if you find one, you hold on to it and you can take that affirmation with you. I know that our educators have many stories to share about today. I applaud them all. Like I said, we have remarkable educators and staff in this district. I, along with our executive board members, Lisa Baumann, Emily King, and Nancy Ellis, our bargaining team, Jim Gregoretti, Joaquin Bernal, Sylvia Jimenez-Matine, Ginny Mason, Tracy Ewens, our elections chair, Jen Bodlovich, grievance chair, Matt Transu, and our site council representatives from 11 school sites represent over 330 and growing um, talented teachers, counselors, psychologists, nurses, and speech language pathologists who are dedicated to the students and families in this district. Ripsia's leadership is engaged with our members, their experiences, their needs, and their concerns. It is our duty to represent and negotiate on behalf of our members, but be assured, at the heart of our decisions, it's really what is best for our students. It is our hope that we can have meaningful but productive dialogue with the Board of Trustees and district leadership. We are mobilized, we are organized. We urge for clear, consistent, and timely communication. We urge district leadership to be proactive instead of reactive in all aspects that concern our district. Ripsia presented a draft MOU regarding the COVID-19 pandemic and so, and school opening for this school year on August 9th. We did so after hearing some concerns from members from Richard Crane, who started, you know, the all-year school in, in July. We know the district is dedicated to safety and will follow California Department of Public Health guidelines, hence the word guidelines. But our members asked for proactive, clear, and consistent messaging at all sites. It's not happening. We don't want just an email. We don't just want a flow chart. We want real tangible things in writing that we can all follow. We did not receive a counter um, until Fri-, I'm sorry, we presented it, you know, on August 9th. Um, we did not receive a counter until Friday, August 13th at 7:00 PM. Remember, that's after our professional development, the last Friday before school starts. We had members and families asking us what was going on. The Ripsia bargaining team and executive board met Sunday night, August 15th, for three hours, and we put together a thoughtful and reasonable response and emailed it back that night. Why? Because this, it's paramount that our students are safe and we keep our schools open. Our repeated goal is to provide our unit members further clarity and specific safety protocols. We need families and students to have timely information, an updated family handbook on the website, safety plans that are ready. We need um, clarity and we need safety again. We want compensation for covering classes because there is a substitute shortage. We want compensation for teachers who must um, prepare packets for when students are out on quarantine. We want immediate updates when guidelines change. Um, my crisis go experience, Tracy shared hers, and I, I don't mean to make this really long. Um, but so for me, so great to be on campus, but when I walked into campus, there was a very long line. I didn't see people directing the kids where to go. I think they all thought they had to wait in the same line to get their schedule. Many had to like um, wait for, to check in for crisis go. Ultimately, I had students come to class and, you know, it's all ed. They come as they come and we accept them as they are. So my job, the responsibility to check, to make sure that each student, each, you know, family recorded for their student lays on the responsibility of the teacher. We're trying to welcome kids into our classroom when they're already anxious and my job is to run back and forth to make sure they're verified and then say, you got to leave and go. Or um, because of the login issue, so I'm not going to, you know, this is not going to blame it on anybody, but my kids couldn't even log into the app because their login info didn't work. So that's all fine. I'm just saying, like, it's not all worked out yet. So um, we need the most protection now, especially during high transmission rates. So students do not continue a learning loss, which will happen with targeted quarantines. And they're going to happen. We need more than a newsletter. Um, what about some of the money that just came through? Could we have, um, I'm just brainstorming, talking off my head right now. Could we have um, somebody go into the community and educate families what this all means? Like Michelle brought up a couple of ideas around that. How do we get this information out to families? We want to stay open. We want to stay safe and we want to teach in person. Our goal for this MOU has been and will always be the safety of our teachers and our students. While we would have appreciated something before we began school, we will continue to work with the district in the hope of an MOU that is clear, concise, and comprehensive. We're waiting for a response back from the district. So here's the CBA bargaining update, and I swear Jim and I did not write this, like, we did not write the report together. Um, it obviously shows that um, we're organized, we're mobilized, and we have consistent messaging. I don't think um, it's going to hurt by repeating this information. So here's our update. Our CBA is expired. Time is of the essence. As you know, the Ripsia bargaining team sent our sunshine letter to the district on April 14th, acknowledged that it came, and um, I'm going to just summarize this real quick. On May 18th, um, we opened on three articles, Article 15 wages, Article 6 class side, Article 4 hours. The bargaining team presented that proposal on June 9th, after the school year ended. Ripsia continues to show its willingness to cooperate with the district and work collaboratively. Per the dates of our CBA proposal, we expected the district would have responded sooner. The district's counterproposal was sent to us on August 3rd, after the Board of Trustees had ratified their budget for the 2020, I'm sorry, 21-22 school year without prioritizing raises for our members. Ripsia rejected the district's counterproposal on those three articles because it's unacceptable. We stand by our initial proposal. We did engage in dialogue over the counter. The CBO cited um, a deficit budget and that a large chunk of the budget goes towards benefits. The district never opened on benefits. Why not? We did agree to continue our collaboration and we, and research a tiered benefits package without losing our strong package. Um, there were um, members from the district and Ripsia, and I think the other two labor partners that did look at tiered packages, benefit packages last year. The ball got dropped in March. The district is now responsible to thoroughly review our initial proposal. Both parties agreed to table further negotiations until we review the district's unaudited actuels that are available on September 15th. September 23rd is our next bargaining date. Here's our takeaway. We were willing to bargain last year. We have continued delays from the district. We have, there's this continued view of others over teachers. And we have delayed communication. It is a distressing pattern. Ultimately, the district has to change its priorities and a 1.5% wage increase does not do that. It essentially maintains the status quo approach. We are um, asking for an increase to our cost of living expenses. We're not asking for much. This is despite the state increase to the ed budget. If you've been paying attention, you would know that other districts in Sonoma County are doing that. Santa Rosa Teachers Association, the Twin Hills Teachers Association, Old Adobe's educators. In order to continue to strengthen our district, I care deeply about this district. I've been here a long time. So we can best serve our students, it's imperative that we attract and retain highly qualified educators. As you can see, our neighboring districts are prioritizing. We need you to do the same. I've been in this district a long time. Ripsia had a motto, plan for us. This year, it is time for us. Thank you.
Item C1, receipt of official correspondence, letter from Sonoma County Superintendent of Schools.
This is a letter, the annual letter regarding the Williams visits that we received from county, county office.
Does anybody have any questions?
This is the, the one from Stephen D. Harrington?
Yes.
So were there, is he saying that there were, the visits were all done prior to July 2021, or July 2021?
Right, these are annual visits and they didn't occur this last quarter.
Item C2, Sonoma County Quarterly Treasures Report for the quarter ending June 30th, 2021, which is posted on our website.
This is also an annual letter received from SCO.
8A Consent Agenda, Items 8A through 8L with 8D being revised. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve 8A through L without uh, D being revised.
Thank you, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 9A, Proclamation 2022, declaring 9A Proclamation 2022, declaring September a School Attendance Awareness Month.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rocky Schuman, and one of my accountabilities for the district is attendance. I am the Student Services Specialist, working in the Student Services Department. And September is Attendance Awareness Month. And as you know, showing up for school has a huge impact on student learning. And so we're asking the board to actually adopt the proclamation to that September is Attendance Awareness Month. I do want to read one part of the declaration, and it says, "The uncertainties of recent events, including the COVID-19 pandemic, wildfires, and social restlessness, have put into focus our need to maintain strong relationships with students and their families, and our need to focus attention on equity, mental health, and access to support services within the community." And yesterday, the administrative team were given T-shirts to wear, and I don't know if you've seen them, but the logo is there, and it's on the back of them. It says, "Reengage, Reconnect, Reimagine." And I think that this messaging is very important for our district at this point in time to welcome students back and let them know that we want them here and that it's important for them to be in attendance. So I am hoping that you are aligned with the Sonoma County Office of Education and declare September Attendance Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve 9A Proclamation 2022-2, declaring September a School Attendance Awareness Month?
Where is this gonna be posted? This, this proclamation?
That's a good question. I, it's, it's in the fourth minute, and it's something that we can propose to hear. So that's what I know.
We can certainly share this with our schools and post it at our schools as well as the district office.
Well, my, my concern is that it's, it's a good proclamation, I think, and it's talking about the impact of chronic absences on, especially hitting low-income students and children of colors, kids that don't have the resources to recover from that. But how are we gonna, I mean, are we gonna put this on the Facebook page, on the, on the webpage? Or are we just gonna rubber stamp it here?
We can certainly do that. One of the things that happens typically in September is the schools campaign, and we really work at talking to our parents at different, at different meetings about the importance of attendance. So that, that's some of the work. And there's, there's definitely tools on attendance work websites that we can use to, to share this. But definitely, this is when we, we campaign, we say, "It's really important, come to school." Of course, if you're sick, you have to stay home. That, that's kind of that, you know, that, that balance that we wanna communicate with our families. But we can definitely share it and post it out.
The district has also hired a Coordinator of Family and Student Wellness, which is going to impact the student population. We've also increased our hiring of counselors to come into the schools, to be present with students. So there's a big focus on student wellness and ensuring that they are safe and doing well.
So are, you said that you're, you're, you're responsible for attendance with your...
That's correct.
Job description, okay. So are you like the de facto truancy officer?
Well, I have support with, from other people, but I'm the person that is in charge of the SARB meetings, so School Attendance Review Board meetings and other efforts that we employ throughout the district to support student attendance. This last year, we did a number of home visits for students who were out and weren't coming to school, so we would contact the families and then make, you know, a personal visit to their home to connect with them, to talk about what was in, in the way of students coming to school. So really, a lot of the work is about the relationship with the people in, that are having the challenge and looking at what is in the way of a, a student coming to school. So we had resources that we were deploying last year. The, the county had housing support for families, so we're disseminating that information so that they could receive funds for their living expenses. We had the Redwood Empire Food Bank on our campus every Wednesday for a year and a few months so that families knew that they could come to our campuses to get food so that the, the things that might get in the way of their survival, they didn't have to focus on those things, and they were, could then focus on their child's education.
Really, our hope is to prevent getting to the SARB meeting. So how do we reach out and connect with families, make those personal connections and phone, phone calls to determine what are the obstacles to getting them to school? You know, one of the things that I've noticed is we have strong attendance or records, you know, in the 90 percentile. So, you know, although we don't want to stop at that, we want to figure out what's happening with that 10%. But we have a good attendance rate. It's something that we're going to be looking at to ensure. We, you know, our attendance rate actually went up during distance learning, which is kind of fascinating. We want, want to make sure that we're checking our, our students. That is part of the California Dashboard, and it's something that we're gonna be reviewing so that we really identify who is not coming to school and how we can get them to school. We don't, we don't want to get to the punitive piece. We want to, you know, get involved, you know, is, you know, does a child need an alarm clock? You know, look at all those obstacles so that we can support them and make sure that they're in school.
Rocky, report to Matt Marshall, Director of Ed Service, Student Services, correct? So you have a team, it's not just you?
That's right, and with the principals and the, and the teachers. It goes all the way, really, you know, through the entire district to see what's happening. And, you know, it's about relationship, it's about connecting. And if students feel connected to, they're gonna want to be here. I've never, one of my favorite questions to ask when we're at a SARB meeting is to the students, because they come to the meetings, "Do you want your high school diploma?" And I've, every student has said yes. And if I ask the families that same question, they want that. So people want their children educated. It's just a matter of figuring out what's getting in the way toward that, them, that happening for them.
I think we're gonna have as many reasons for not attending as there are students. Every family has a different story.
They do, and, and it needs to be listened to and addressed in a way that's compassionate and like Dr. Perez said, not punitive, you know, like, yeah, but really like taking a look at, okay, what's wanted and needed here so that you can be here and, and thrive.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rocky. If there were no more questions or comments, can I have a motion to approve 9A Proclamation 2022-2, declaring September a School Attendance Awareness Month?
I'll motion that we approve 9A Proclamation 2022, declaring September a School Attendance Awareness Month.
Thank you, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Roll call, please.
Trusty Brown? Trusty Chino?
Yes.
Trusty Gillis?
Yes, sorry.
Trusty Nelson?
Yes.
Trusty Wing?
Yes.
9B, First Day of School Update. I did no proclamations. Okay.
We need the mascots here doing, you know...
Entertainment.
I want the mascots at every board meeting.
That would have been fantastic.
They were so fun yesterday.
I think we should try that, for sure. That would be great.
You gonna wear one?
I will wear one.
Or one a month, at least, have them come visit.
Out in the field and not be identified and do crazy stuff.
Are you gonna do the one-handed cartwheel?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Do you do the moon dancing?
Yeah, he's recording this, this is like, we're having it now.
I know.
Well, it was certainly a magical day yesterday with everything that went on with the mascots and seeing everybody. And so, good evening, and I want to share with you just really few highlights of today. And I have a few pictures from our schools and just want to share a few stories of our opening day. So with that, John Reed, we have our new principal, Anna Maria Young. You can see her there already in her, in her principal chair. I got to be at John Reed this morning, and it was absolutely phenomenal to see the families arrive. And yeah, going through the crisis go and working all of that out, it's one new step. But teachers were so prepared and ready for their students. It was just a delight to walk through the classrooms and see the enthusiasm right before the kids arrive is... I, I kind of liked that moment of right before the kids arrive into a classroom and visiting all the teachers. And so it was great, really happy day. And then at the end of the day, I went back for their staff meeting, and all the teachers at John Reed were standing in a circle, just sharing how they felt to be back. And a lot of new teachers there at John Reed. So it's, so it's nice to see the veteran teachers really welcoming the new teachers and of course, welcoming the students. So incredibly great time there at Monta Vista. And then, I'm sorry, at, at John Reed. So at Monta Vista as well, really wonderful day. Kathy Olmsted said, "It was a great day at Monta Vista. It made our hearts happy to see our students back." So we can see some kids there on the playground and lined up and ready. Then we have Thomas Page Academy. You see, there are our wonderful leader, Dr. Perez, greeting students. And what was shared from the principal was that New Hope Church and Cotati PD brought a bag of school supplies for every student. So that's that second picture that you see there, supplies being provided by our loving community to our students. And UELF, I'm sure they had music pumping, that is the style there, the balloons, just a really welcoming and spirited school that it is. As you heard, Principal Lundie, you know, with the enthusiasm that's at UELF. It was a really wonderful kickoff day for the students there as well. Technology Middle School, great first day as well, kids getting settled into their classrooms. I had the joy today of subbing at, at Technology Middle School, and I wish I could have spent the entire day there. It was fantastic, and just getting to be with kids and hearing about their first day. And I asked the sixth graders, "Tell me, is middle school all that you thought it would be?" And I loved what every kid said. "It's, it's not as scary as my older brother said it would be." I was like, "Great." I said, "They try to scare you, but you're gonna do great at middle school." And then talking to eighth graders, who really had only been on campus a few months in the sixth grade. So it's just such a new experience for all middle schoolers. The sixth graders, you know, who really were, really didn't get to go to school in fifth grade that much in person, and then here they are with all that anxiety. But what a welcoming and loving staff. And everyone just was on task, getting to class. And you could hear at the district office, "We can hear the sound of children, and I love it." Margaret Hahn, we have Charlotte, subbing as principal for, for Rachel, who is out on leave. You can see her two little babies there in the corner. This is a snapshot that I took of an awesome YouTube video of welcoming the students back. It's really great, great music, all the staff welcoming the kids back on a YouTube video, very engaging. And they had a great first day as well today. Then, as I said, you know, at, at Tech Middle School, actually, I think that's Lawrence Jones. I think I have the wrong title there on that one, forgive me. So that's, those are pictures from LJ. And what Melissa had to share from LJ was that they welcomed their students with a cornerstone day. Students familiarized themselves with campus with a scavenger hunt. They ended the day with lots of Jaguar spirit at an art door rally that featured the staff band. So really great welcome back. And then, as we heard our student rep share what happened, the welcoming at Rancho with the big cougar entry for the students. And Dr. Gansler shared that students and teachers were happy, nervous, and excited to return to school. Some were still connecting with the technology. Everyone wore their masks, and they look forward to an in-person year. And then we have our Virtual Academy. So obviously, we don't have pictures, because the kids are online. So we're gonna try to get a screenshot of what's going on there, but we have many students participating today in their required daily synchronous instruction. We are at about 200 interested families, and we are working very hard to keep up with the increased demand and interest. So this literally felt like it happened overnight. We were holding steady at 20, 30 kids, and we went all of a sudden, literally, in a matter of three or four days, we went from 30 kids to 150. That quickly became 170. That is now over 200 students with an interest in the Virtual Learning Academy. And so we're working hard. Each student requires a master agreement for their learning, and so those are one-on-one meetings. And we are trying to grow our team to keep up with the demand. So that is our opening day.
Thank you. Yay.
Thanks for your short recess.
Other question?
Yes.
At the Virtual Academy, how many students were from this district? We decided to do the Virtual Academy, and how many students were, were out of district?
So, so far, they're all in-district students. We are working on agreements with, with much, they're very small districts outside of ours. Because once we enter into an agreement, we have to accept every student they send us, unless it's an IEP that we can't meet FAP for. But we, we don't get to say we're full. So, because we become the way that they meet their legal obligation. So we're being very cautious about that because staffing is not easy to come by. We're working on it. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 10, any comments, Mindy? Thank you. 11A, Approval of Agreement to Prepare Developer Fee Justification Study with Drax Schreter and Associates.
I don't know if I should, should I go up there and talk, or?
I think you're fine.
Drax Schreter is a, is a vendor we used in this district in the past, and there's an anticipation of a fee increase for developer fees, so we just want to justify that fee if, if we can in this district, and this is for your approval.
Do we know where we're at with the residential commercial fees right now currently?
Yes, I, I do have those numbers. Currently, $3.79 per square foot for residential and 61 cents per square foot for commercial.
Do we know what it's anticipated to go up to yet?
The current rates are, the maximum rates are like 424, and I don't have the other...
That's okay.
But they're, but they're looking at a potential six... But they're, but they're looking at a potential 4% increase.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve 11A, approval of agreement to prepare developer fee justification study with Jack Schreeter and Associates?
I move that we approve 11A.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 12A, fiscal update and planning.
So for this item, generally, the past CBO would talk about several things, one being enrollment. And I don't really, you know, today was the first day, I'm not going to talk too much about that. Budget information, I have a presentation on. There was no, we didn't really, in July, we didn't really do any budget transfers in the current budget. We're really focusing on the, on the close of the books. So there'll be, there'll be more activity in the revised budgets as we, as we move along in the months ahead. But I did want to give a quick, just overview of the governor's budget that was adopted in June, and we, you know, was analyzed, and I sat through a, you know, three-hour... Sorry. Yeah, I'm trying to get there. There we go. And just a few slides. So you'll see this slide in many of my presentations, because it just shows where we are in the budget process from a state perspective. So in mid-June, the budget was adopted, and we're gonna close the books. That's just our part, and you'll get that report in September. I'll just go over this as we, as we go through time, because you'll see that, like I said, every time. So as you, as everyone's heard in the state of California, that this budget was so great, you know, this education budget was all kinds of bells and whistles, great, great all around. But a lot of it is one-time. And what I wanted to stress here is that, you know, part of it is one-time, and some of it is ongoing. And what I'm going to focus on in my presentation today is what, how it affects our district. And the ongoing spending is really targeted toward the concentration part of the formula, which we don't receive. So then, a lot of the ongoing money doesn't really affect our district. One-time, on the other hand, does. So all of that is good news, and we're not going to turn away money however it comes. Some of the risks to the budget, there are three major risks. You know, inflation, worker shortages, all applied to our district as well. We're finding that it's very hard to hire people, teachers, classified staff, everyone. And then the potential resurgence of COVID-19 due to, you know, the Delta variant and so forth. We're not, you know, that was the reaction to budgets, state budgets of the past, and thankfully, we've come out pretty well over that. So I don't know if you've heard, but potentially, they're gonna put a cap on reserves for next year. Doesn't really apply to us, because we don't have reserves of 10% or more. So that's good. And this, this slide just shows the governor's budget in January versus the May revision versus the enacted budget. And if you see the Proposition 98 Minimum Guarantee, there really was no change. There wasn't a lot of change between May and, and the enacted budget. And especially what, what affects our district. So in 2122, the LCFF funding factors are highlighted here. And like I said earlier, the concentration grant funding percentage increased to 65%. And that's where a lot of the ongoing money went, which doesn't affect our district, unfortunately.
And John, the reason it doesn't affect us is because we don't have the levels of the different pupil population, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This is a good, this is good news for our district, cash flow and deferrals. The enacted budget is gonna take all the deferrals away, so we're gonna get all the money as it's allocated throughout the year without any delays. So we're gonna get all of this year's money this year. So some of the, more of the good news, in our child nutrition program, there's some one-time money for infrastructure upgrades. I don't have a lot of information, because there's not a lot of information available, but it looks to be like, at least $25,000 for a district's gonna come to help upgrade our facilities for our kitchens, our food service staff. And then, definitely in 2023, we're gonna be serving at least two meals and being paid for them accordingly. And the state is reimbursing school meals at a higher rate this year with some money. So as the budget was presented to you in June, before I got here, the good news is that we don't have to contribute as much to the food service program as we have potentially this year and the prior year. There's a, this is an expanded learning opportunities program that's outside of the money that we've already received. This is a new program, and it's one of the one-time monies that is being talked about. Again, more information will come out as time goes on, because there isn't much, but we'll keep you posted on that. But these are some of the parameters around this money. You know, there'll be, again, this is just more information, and I, you can please use this as a reference to, to go back to, I don't want to talk a lot about it, because we just don't know too much about it at this point. And this is, this is probably the one thing that the, the budget that was enacted, that actually helps our district fiscally currently right now. And that is that in May, there was a proposal that the unemployment rate was gonna be 1.23% in 2122 in our current year. And the budget, I'm sorry, the governor signed the enacted budget at 0.5%. So 0.5% is still like 20 times more than what it was, but it's not 200 times more than it was. So this is about the savings to the district of about, you know, $300,000 or more. So you'll see, you'll see that change as we, as we know all of who we're paying for and everything as the months go on, so.
So we're still gonna have an increase, but that note down below says it's gonna be paid for by the increase in the COLA?
I mean, that was the idea, yeah. The COLA was, I mean, I could go back to the COLA, but...
Well, I think it said 507, right?
Yeah, 507.
Okay.
That was a just, part of the justification for giving us a higher COLA.
Right.
So what does this mean for Catatirona Park? No change. Our, basically, our LCFF per ADA funding is just over $10,000 per student. We haven't changed our ADA projections, 5,000, you know, it's about 5,400 kids. And the total LCFF revenue is just over 55 million. So we touched on this a little bit earlier, but the ADA and staffing impacts, we're good again for this year, because our ADA is based on 2019-20. There's a potential for the ADA cliff, is what they're calling it. And it's what, you know, is keeping me up at night, because we just don't know, you know, initial signs are good that, you know, our enrollment is up, and our ADA will be impacted in a positive way. But we just don't know until we see butts in seats or eyeballs, eyeballs in our classrooms, so.
So question then?
Go ahead.
We are getting paid ADA right now on the number. Is that 5417?
Yes.
Okay, so the cliff...
For this year.
The cliff of the mountain come 2023, which will be August of next year.
Well, no, I'm sorry. The 5423, the 5417 number is the 2019-20 ADA number.
Right.
So based on what our ADA for next year will be the higher of this year or next year's ADA that we get paid in 2223. Does that make sense?
I think so.
We are now keeping track of ADA and enrollment again for this year.
Right.
We will be paid the higher of the two, no matter what.
So then, or what we're gonna be next year?
For 2223, we will be paid the higher of the ADA for this year...
Okay.
Or the current year next year.
Okay.
So the real cliff is 2324?
Well, the cliff really could be for next year for most districts, right? Because we're, if everyone is being paid for ADA from two years ago, now, if you're in a declining enrollment district, you're, you're now counting for, or getting paid for potentially two years of declining enrollment, starting in 2223. Because the ADA will be the higher of this year, 2122, or the current year, next year, 2223?
So if we end up with this year with declining enrollment under 54, that's where we're gonna be sitting?
Correct. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then it's crucial that staffing going forward will staff to your ADA funding.
Yes. Well, we try to keep staffing to enrollment, obviously, you know, we don't, I don't think we're overstaffed by any means now, but, you know, we just have to keep staffing tight to the actual kids and seats.
Because usually, at this time of the year, it's crucial, you've planned the ADA budget...
Yeah.
And in reality, how many students do you have?
Right.
And hopefully, those two are pretty doggone close.
Yes.
We've had other years in the past where, whoops, we're down 200 students from where we planned...
Right.
And 200 students times $10,000 a student is $2 million, right?
Correct.
So now you've got a $2 million issue. So 100 students is a million-dollar issue, which is hard to deal with. And so, it's just, it's just planning, and it's kind of like, what, my paycheck, and will I be able to pay the rent?
Right.
So.
And that's where reserves come into play, you know, that's, that's what helps us keep our doors open and keep our, you know, because the loss in ADA and the catch-up for staffing don't mix. You know, you usually don't know how many students you've lost from the prior year, if that's the case. You know, that doesn't look like the case here, doesn't, that's not how it was projected. But it does make me worry, because we don't really know what the effects of COVID have been on families and whether or not they've moved away until we see their, you know, see their, the eyes, their whites, the whites of their eyes in classes. Any other questions?
No more questions or comments? It's been requested that we take a five-minute break. So we'll be back in five minutes. So we'll be back in five minutes. To order. Item 12B, Resolution 2022-3, Authorization for Myra Perez, Liz Elena Perez, John Bartolome, Molly Kohler, Rachel Allen, Matthew Marshall, Josh Savage, Jennifer Hansen to sign on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
First and second?
Oh, sorry. Can I get a motion to approve item 12B?
I move that we approve Resolution 2023-2022-3.
Thank you, Dad.
I'll second.
Thanks, Joe, roll call, please. Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Chaminade?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Nelson?
Yes.
Trustee Wei?
Yes.
Item 12C, Approval to Recommend Deletion of Board Policy 6157, Distance Learning.
We, will we know that distance learning sunsetted on June 30th, 2021? So we are deviating board policy 6157?
Any questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve 12C?
I will make a motion to approve 12C, Approval to Recommend Deletion of Board Policy 6157, Distance Learning.
Thank you, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lev, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 12B, First Reading and Waive, Second Reading, Approval of Revisions to Board Policy Administrative Regulation 6158, Independent Study.
Yes, so Governor Newsom signed into law Assembly Bill 130, and it makes changes to independent study law. Making the options to claim ADA are either in-person or independent study. AB 130 includes a complete rewrite of independent study law for this school year. And so we are required to provide independent study for parents seeking an alternative to in-person learning. And these changes require that we make the requested revisions to the board policy and the administrative regulation. The big changes in the BP and AR is the requirement for synchronous instruction in independent study in certain grade spans, so that is new. A revised written agreement, which we've included in your packet. And there's new record-keeping requirements, re-engagement requirements that kick in if a student isn't engaged in completing work. At the third day, we're required to engage in some mitigation factors to make sure that the student can be re-engaged. And we have new reporting requirements to the CCEE and changes to audits in independent study law.
Any questions or comments?
I have only one question because it says that we're waiving the second reading. So this, this is, the language in this is specific to the law that was passed, so there's no question about it. It's as, okay.
As is, this is the recommended policy. And the reason we're asking for the waiving of the second reading is because school has opened and we want to be able to, to have this policy on, on the books.
These are the policies that are governing the Virtual Learning Academy.
Any other questions or comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve item 12D?
I move that we approve 12D.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item 12E, Acceptance of Gifts and Donations to School and District. Looks like we have a donation, Technology Middle School, from Mark Lloyd for art books and supplies in the amount of $500. We want to thank him. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mark Lloyd.
Can we get a motion to approve 12E?
I'll make a motion to approve 12E, Acceptance of Gifts and Donations.
Thank you, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 13A, Board Member Reports and Future Agenda Items, we will start with Mark, please.
So I guess I have a couple of questions and I'll ask them, I'll ask them, I guess, in private about how long public, I thought there was a limit to public comment as far as minutes. And the other question that I have is, some of the numbers that were mentioned, we only talk about them in closed session, so I'm just wondering, how allowed is that for them to do that? With the RIPSIA negotiations, so.
Well, we can, we can certainly provide a summary.
No, no, I mean, like, we're not allowed to talk about it, but, but they are, I'm just checking.
Well, we, we can provide, we, we're able to provide a summary, they provided the information to us. We can also provide a summary and.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so those are my questions for today.
So, Mark, just, just a key thing, if a unioner comes forwards and starts, as long as we don't respond, I think, you know, we, I think they're allowed to, to, you know, report out information or this or that, but as part of the response is, we do not respond because then you're in a negotiation thing, so I think they're allowed to do that, but we just listen, so.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure because, you know, what we've been taught has been like, you know, we don't talk about what goes on in closed session at all, so. Okay, so, like I said, that's, those are my only questions, I guess, from, from the meeting today. It's been a very busy summer for, for the Nelson family. And today was my daughter's first day onsite at high school with, her last name is Al Nelson, so that was awesome, it had its own little technical glitches, so I hear what they're saying. I guess I'm just excited for a new year, you know, athletics have started. I got to come here for the orientation last Wednesday and check in, but they didn't allow us in, so I got to kind of watch it from afar. And I'm just glad that the kids are back in school and I realized that one of the comments was, she hoped that we have the magic answer for how to go back during COVID. And I don't know if there is a magic answer, but I'm glad that we're trying, at the very least, so. She was so excited to go, I know all of the kids that, well, most of the kids were excited to go back that we know. So I'm excited for that, I'm excited for the chance for the district to excel and to shine and, yeah. Go 20, 21, 22.
In answer to your question, people that come from the community to speak are three minutes and 20 minutes maximum on one particular subject matter.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And we can, you know, enforce the three-minute or you can, you can just let somebody, if somebody's talking longer than that, you can go ahead and do that, right?
You can also extend it too, you could take a vote to allow, allow each person to speak up to five minutes or whatever time.
Right. I think one of our speakers went longer than, than three, well, a couple of them went longer than three minutes tonight, so.
We only had two.
We had two, right.
Yeah.
If we had 200 speakers and they all wanted to speak, you know, we'd be here till tomorrow.
Other thing that we, that I've had experience with, if you happen to have a speaker of another language and we translate for them, we would typically allow six minutes, so three minutes and then the translation and then the three minutes, should, should that occur.
Were you done, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe, your turn.
I got to go to the opening day ceremonies yesterday. It was pretty awesome, everyone was super excited. It was really awkward for me because I had to face everyone and I didn't like that. But.
Did the mascot mask?
Yeah, the mascot mask, one of the mascots had a mask on. But yeah, it's, it's unreal. Took my daughter to school, me and wife took my daughter to school. And I was one of those people drinking coffee. But I think they had, there was like some, you know, some rules, because I made a joke about there wasn't any food. They said we can only do coffee, no food, COVID rules. So it was nice to go back and it's, the common theme that I'm hearing is that we're doing everything we can to keep kids in school, because I remember last year it was someone has COVID, the class is shut down, you know, everyone goes home, it's over. And now it's like, let's, now we kind of know what we're working with, how do we, you know, keep it to a minimum, keep kids in school, and how do we get them back in? So even like, you know what, our, the testing, COVID testing isn't fast enough, how do we get faster testing? You know, like, you know, we don't really have these guidelines, but this is what we're going to do, you know, so. I think that common theme makes me happy because it's just, we're going to do everything we can this year to keep kids in school, no matter what happens, as long as we're being safe and as long as the, whatever that four-letter word is, California Health, whatever department.
Department of Public Health.
Is letting us, yeah.
CDPH.
Yeah, CDC, CDPH, OSHA, you know, so. But yeah, my kid, my son, he went to, he's like in LJ, so I was like, later, get on your bike, go to school. I'll see you when I get home. He got it, so. And then I'm really looking forward to the board getting together to work on the board, to work on, I guess, our soft skills training, if you want to call it that, and to align all our goals. I'm really looking forward to that.
That's it. Thank you, Lev?
So, I want to talk about three things, first of all, the district re, what do we call that? Reopening or renewal or whatever. So, in addition to the mascots, which I enjoyed thoroughly, some, someone called Jen from HR got up and gave out all these awards, so. That, to me, it's, I look back on my career when, you know, and I think it's kind of important to, you know, reward our employees and that was, that was, I really appreciated that. Saw the people walking in front of me in the five and the 10 and the 15 and, I think, is it John Anderson that was 35 years? That's amazing, so I'm trying to think, wait a minute, he's been here longer than me. Pardon me? John Anderson, right? I know he does track, but I don't know, is that the high school? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he coached track when I was there.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's good. So, so, so that was great. And too, I, I noticed that the, each school, when they announced their mascot, was just the, you know, teamwork and them screaming and yelling and I thought that was special too, so. Second thing, Joe and I and Myra attended a Zoom meeting for the two-by-two-by-two meeting with the City of Rondell Park and Katati. They had a special guest from the Food Bank talk and it kind of, kind of woke up, you know, a reminder of the number of people that, that have provided food in our district and thing. And so that was, that was enlightening type of thing, so that kind of, you know, it talks about meals and things, so. Something that we don't, you know, I don't often think about, but it helped, helped me realize that there is that need and to. And the third thing I want to talk about is our project learning person left, but in 19, I won't say the year, but when I was 10 years old, probably before most of you were born, Mr. Milbrook at Santa Margarita High, Santa Margarita Elementary School in Terlinda, decided to do project learning for his class. And to this date, I can remember that teacher over any other teacher I had in my entire education. We built a boat and we took that boat out to Marin Civic Center and sailed it. But math was based on building that boat, social studies and weather, science. I think I probably wrote my first story, you know, back then, in full sentences and stuff, but that project learning experience for me was one of my highlights that I still remember to this day and I can still remember Mr. Milbrook. If you ask, you know, my fellow board members, can you think of the names of all your, while you're, while you're younger, you might be able to have a better memory, but I challenge you, when you're a senior citizen, if you can remember back and which teachers stand out, so. Anyway, so, yeah, I'm excited about this year and let's just hope we can get through the bumps and along the road, so thank you.
Michelle?
It's been an exciting last two weeks. I went to the leadership training with Dr. Porter that Myra did with the leadership team and that was great to hear all of our district leader strengths and how they're all going to work together and it was just a really positive, exciting meeting. Joined Trustee Brown and Trustee Chaminade at the Welcome Back Rally yesterday and, again, those mascots were really awesome. If there's a video, we really need to post it online because I think everyone needs to see that. I have started the Masters in Governance Training through California School Board Association, so I've completed the first round. I take the second round next week and then it's every month, kind of for the next three or four months. That's been really informative and great. And then for future agenda items, it doesn't have to be next month, but under fiscal planning and update, we always have a facility update on there, but since I've been on the board, we haven't had one. So just kind of a what projects are out there, what, and it kind of came up yesterday, we were at the ranch and I know the previous board approved a new sign, a new scoreboard. And so just kind of what projects are out there and need to, are still in the process and, and those kinds of things, just so we know what's in the works and what's been done and what the plan is for the school year because I'm sure there's something we're going to do somewhere, so, that's it.
I'm going to pass, other than just say thank you to all the staff, I know everybody's been working really hard. And I want to thank Jen for your hard work, I know you came in and it's been a lot of hard work and you've stepped up. We really appreciate it. So if nobody else has anything else they want to say, we will adjourn. What did I do now? Oh, again, that's the second time.
Is there a superintendent here?
Yes, there is.
Is there a superintendent here?
Well, let me just tie yours.
Okay, 13B, Superintendent's Report.
Make it, make it quick, Myra, we want to go home. Anyway, I just want to let you know, we spent all of July interviewing.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson, for making sure we had candidates to interview, she was on the phone, she was hustling and I really appreciate that, we're busy, we're busy filling positions, I think we fill, we were filling positions last week positions. I think we fill, we were filling positions last week for, prior to opening schools and finding, finding principals. So that's a lot of hard work. And HR was right there along with us, keeping us focused and on task. We had goal-setting meetings also in July with each principal. We discussed what their goals, how, you know, their last year's goals and what they're planning for the upcoming year. So that was really informative. I was able to attend a superintendent's retreat in Bodega Bay with other county superintendents. Why was this memorable? I have not, I had never met these people. So to be able to sit in a room and interact with them, I realized it gets, it gets to be a lonely job, but you can, but to be with other superintendent, like, that happened? Well, what did you do with that? And so we're a lot of problem solving. So that was a really great, a day, full day. We had an incredible leadership team week. I have to applaud the staff, Mr. Bartolome, Dr. Perez, Ms. Hanson, Matt Marshall, Rocky, everyone presented and did a phenomenal job. I got to the point where I got teary-eyed about the collaboration and the positive energy in the room and people working together. So it was an incredible week. And, and I think it was, they were, their brains were full when they walked out of that room. But it was phenomenal week for all of us. Anyway, and Dr. Porter also joined us for Strengths Finder. We had a wonderful new teacher orientation, again, welcoming our new teachers and having them at the Tech, Tech Middle Library. We went out and met with the John Reed staff. There's nothing more anxiety-producing than to lose your principal a few days before school's open. So we spent time with them and they were very appreciative. Again, Dr. Perez, Ms. Hanson and I spent time in asking them, what are the strengths of their school? What are the needs of the school? And what are the, what are the characteristics they need in their new leader? And it was a really wonderful professional conversation. And they eloquently expressed their dedication to the children and to the school and how they want to be there. So it's just really reassuring for, for us. And we had our wonderful kickoff with our mascots. I want to thank Principal Lundie and Principal Broham. I tell them, they are the ones that are going to help us be fun because my idea of a fun time is reading a book. So the mascots had to come from them. So I said, hey, what can we do? So they were in charge of the fun. And of course, the first day of school, what a blast to be talking to our students. I was able to translate for some of our high school students. I was talking to the kindergartners about how many goldfish they were eating. And I had really eloquent, long conversations with our kin, or first and second graders about, that their parents did not give them enough to snack at snack time and they needed more food. They were a little hungry. So I said, make sure you have those conversations tonight. Anyway, this was a lot of fun. Nothing like having our kids on campus. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize. If there's no other business before us, we will adjourn.